Ladies and gentlemen, we have a good crowd tonight. This is wonderful. Somehow, I think they came to see Dr. Stink, or they certainly didn't come to see us. So it's good to see so many guests here with us tonight, and welcome to all of you. I'd like to remind you to please silence your electronic devices, and if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we come before you tonight with heavy hearts over the violence and suffering in the Middle East. Lord, you know that many people in our city are affected very deeply and directly by these events. We ask you to send your spirit of healing and comfort upon them during this difficult time. We ask for your guidance as city leaders to help us promote peace and unity within our community. Help all of us to remember that our city is a community that embraces diversity and respects the dignity of all people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening. So for those of you who don't visit us frequently, which is most of you, we've started a new tradition here in Temple Terrace of opening our meetings with an interesting, fun, or historic fact involving the city of Temple Terrace, or the region that we're in. And so we pass that torch around because they got tired of listening to me every time, which is fine. And tonight, we have a really qualified person to do that, because he's been around here for a long, 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 long time. And that's our Vice Mayor, James Chambers.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to talk about the history of the Arts Festival, and that event's coming up next month, and you're going to hear more about it later in this meeting. But the Arts Festival, this year is 50 years old. It started in 1973 by a lady named Julia Ames. She was a resident that just loved art, and it was held outside the community church on Inverness Avenue. She was assisted by a few other people, including Marjorie Shine, a lot of people know that name, and that show was a success. The next year, the event was moved to River Hills Park and received help from the Recreation Department. Again, the show was a success with 35 artists showing their work. In those early years, there were three clubs that were involved putting on the Arts Festival: the Women's Club, the Junior Women's Club, and the Kiwanis Club. Each of those clubs put in $50 each as seed money to get the show started, and they also provided volunteers. Each year, the show grew ever more successful, and in its heyday at River Hills Park, we had over 250 fine artists and fine crafters displaying paintings, sculptures, photography, jewelry, mixed media, and et cetera stuff. River Hills Park remained the home of the Arts Festival from 1974 until 2014. But there were a lot of factors, including lack of parking, dangerous tree roots that kept tripping people, and other factors, and the group, which was now the formal Arts Council, moved the show to Greco Middle School. That location had very good parking. It was easy access for the artists to load and unload, easy to move around, but it did not have any ambiance. The next year, the show was again at Greco Middle School, and the council had discussions underway about a new location for the Arts Festival. And then on that Saturday night, a tornado went through the area and destroyed a lot of the displays and the artwork. We thought that might be a sign. Sunday's event was canceled, and to this day, that's the only day that the show has never taken place. It has taken place on both days for that entire time, except for that day. The next year, 2016, the Arts Festival was moved to its current location in Woodmont Park. This year's 50th show will feature over 125 fine artists in the juried portion of the show, as well as a crafts division, and started a few years ago, a culinary arts division. From its humble beginnings of three clubs fronting $50 each, to what's now an event with a budget close to $30,000, the Arts Festival is truly a gem in Temple Terrace.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That was fun and interesting, right? Good job. Thank you. Think of the stuff you'll come up with in the next 50 years. So our first item of business is a proclamation for Cybersecurity Awareness Month, which we would have never dreamt of having even just a few years ago, but we do now. And so our Director of IT, Sally Cabrera, is here to accept. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas, the city of Temple Terrace recognizes the vital role that cybersecurity plays in the continued prosperity and growth of our community, the digital age has brought unprecedented benefits to our society, transforming the way we communicate, work, learn, and play, while also introducing challenges to our security. The frequency scale and sophistication of cyber threats continue to rise, targeting our infrastructure businesses, schools, homes, and maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility for which every individual and organization has a crucial role to play. Promoting education and awareness about cyber threats and the steps to protect our information and digital assets is of utmost importance. And whereas, the United States Department of Homeland Security and the National Cybersecurity Alliance have designated October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, I hereby proclaim October 2023 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month." It's a mouthful. Ms. Cabrera, would you like to share a few words?
Any awareness we can bring to cybersecurity risk can help any user just realize the maliciousness of some of these emails. It's just something that is important for everyone, not just citizens, not just staff, just everyone in the country today, just to be aware. And the littlest knowledge we can give to everyone makes it even better.
Very good. Thank you. is for Safe Sleep Awareness Month, and to receive this proclamation is Rebecca Bacon, who is the Executive Director of the Children's Board of Hillsborough County. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas, the city of Temple Terrace recognizes that infant unsafe sleep is one of the leading causes of preventable child deaths in the community. And sleep education for parents and caregivers safeguards the health and well-being of our most precious resources, children and families. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, infants are 40 times more likely to die in an adult bed than in a crib, resulting in 198 deaths in the Tampa Bay area since 2013." That's a lot. "All family members and caregivers should be taught the ABCs of infant safe sleep, ensuring infant sleep alone, on their backs, and in a crib. The Children's Board of Hillsborough County strongly recommends using a firm mattress with tightly fitted sheets and keeping cribs free of blankets, pillows, bumper pads, and stuffed animals. The city of Temple Terrace values the efforts of the Prevent Needless Deaths Campaign in providing ongoing education to prevent unsafe sleep deaths through community outreach, creating social awareness, and providing resources to teach parents life-saving skills." Now, therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Safe Sleep Awareness Month. Would you like to say a few words, Ms. Bacon?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Rebecca Bacon. I'm the new Executive Director of the Children's Board, and I'm pleased to be here today. And I really appreciate the attention that you're helping us bring to this issue. In 2022 alone, according to the Hillsborough County Medical Examiner, there were nine child deaths due to infant unsafe sleep in Hillsborough County. And you already quoted the numbers in the Tampa Bay area, and that's for Hillsborough, Pasco, and Palos. So this is a preventable child death, and so one is too many. So this is an important issue to the Children's Board, and we want to try to educate everybody in the community about how important it is to provide that safe sleep environment. And it's okay to have infants in the room. In fact, that's recommended. However, we want them in their own safe sleep space, as you said, with no other materials, just that mattress, and no other soft bedding, and certainly not having infants in the adult bed with the parents. That will prevent those deaths that we want to prevent. So thank you for your attention to this issue.
Thank you, Dr. Bacon, for being here tonight. Okay, our next item of business is a very honored introduction of our current, recently-done Citizen of the Year, and I'd like to invite Debbie Prescott, who is the new CEO of the Temple Terrace Uptown Chamber of Commerce, to present the award to Dr. Joseph Stanko. And welcome to you, too, as the newly ordained CEO. We welcome you, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So it's great to be here, and it's great to start meeting everyone and getting involved in the community. I quickly, in my role, got involved in the process of sifting through nominations, and then met our award winner this year, Dr. Joseph Stanko. He is a joy to meet and talk to and join me. Having been in the community and worked at USF for over 30 years as a professor of chemistry, at 82 years young, he spends a ton of time volunteering at St. Vincent de Paul and works effortlessly and endlessly in the issue of feeding and helping our homeless. So between transporting the needs of the food supplies from the city of Tampa to the location here in Temple Terrace, as well as taking leftover food supplies out to the camps for the homeless that do not reach him, his efforts by far reach so many people that would not have access to meals every day. So I applaud your efforts, and we are so thankful that you are Citizen of the Year. We're so thankful for St. Vincent de Paul and the work they're doing. So we appreciate everything you've done, and it's great to have brought awareness to the work and to your organization.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. I'm very grateful to the chamber for selecting me this year. It gives me further incentive. And I want to mention that the council here was very essential in giving us the resources. A few years ago, the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry was established by a gentleman in the 80s by the name of Mr. Latina, and it was a very humble operation out of the back room of Corpus Christi Catholic Church down there on 56th Street. And then in 2012, we moved to a trailer on the campus of the Corpus Christi campus there. And then Mr. Latina's passed, and his son, Daniel, passed a few years later and left us a large bequest that enabled us to build a first-class food pantry down there. Well, we knew what we wanted to build, but we didn't have enough funds to place it anywhere. And it was Temple Terrace who came to our assistance and said, "Well, there's a lot behind Wells Fargo Bank, and it's kind of landlocked, no access to the main street, but, you know, we might be able to lease it." So about in 2017, this audience was filled here with many of our volunteers from Corpus Christi, St. Vincent de Paul. And you listened to our arguments, and we held town meetings to assure the neighborhood we're not going to be impacted that much. And we did build that pantry. And I think it's been a wonderful resource to the community, and we're grateful for that opportunity. Our diocese allowed us to put a road along Corpus Christi Church property for access to that land. But it's been wonderful, and we're now serving about 100 families a month. They can come once a month. We have financial support for electric and others. Okay, so I'm grateful to the council and to the citizens of Temple Terrace, to the chamber, for this honor and the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Thanks for being here.
Well, I'm glad to be here.
Okay, just a little context here. A year or so, maybe two years ago now, I'm not sure, we established a centennial committee to help us plan our year of celebration. In 2025, our city will be 100 years old. And so we didn't want to wake up in December of 2024 and start planning for what to do. And so we've enlisted the help of many members of our staff and very talented members of our community to kind of start planning for that. And they've been working for some time. And the Chair of that committee, Nancy Hudson, is here to give us an update on their progress. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ross, and council members. It's just been a year, because I don't want this PowerPoint to be underwhelming. So it's just been wonderful.
Three years, and this is all you've done?
Exactly. So thank you so much. We did want to share with you kind of where we are in our process. We're not asking for anything today. There's no approvals, or we just wanted to give you an update. And the council's been doing an amazing job, or the committee's been doing an amazing job, working very hard. And I appreciate all that they've done and all that they're going to continue to do to take this, you know, to the next steps. But we're going to see today some recommendations. We've made some decisions about how we'd like to see the centennial celebration go forward, and how we think we can make it great for the city. So I just wanted to remind you of the objectives, and that was primarily to plan and coordinate budget market and secure all the sponsorships for the celebration. We were also to develop basically the plan. You gather the community, make recommendations, and implement the overall plans, lead the fundraising initiatives, solicit the sponsors, and coordinate with the staff, which we've been doing, and they've been super helpful and very great to work with. And then just wanted to remind you, that's the logo that you all have previously approved and the little tagline that goes with it, and those are the committee members and the city and council liaisons that have been working with us. So as an overall city celebration, we have decided we want to celebrate the whole year of 2025. So we'll start in January, and it'll go all the way through December. We've been working with the community groups, and we'll continue to find new events and take the current events and brand them for the 100-year celebration so that everything will seem very coordinated, all of the main activities that we do throughout the year. We do want to work with your new marketing contact when they come into play and make sure that the light banners, the decorations in the city, and the signage throughout the city are all branded for the celebration so that we have a very coordinated overall event. We're going to work on some branded merchandise, and we have Julie, one of our committee members, did a wonderful job mocking up some what our T-shirts would look like and what some house flags that we could sell for the community would be, as well as just some overall color branding for us. We'd also love to do a Christmas ornament for the 100 years, and we have one of the clubs already that's interested in working with us on that. We try to have all of those things available by October of 2024 so that people can kind of get ready for the celebration, use them for Christmas gifts, and really help us celebrate for all of 2025. And then, of course, we want to try to make sure that we have one signature smaller event for every single month of the year. Many of those are already in place because they're already kind of staples within our community, but we're going to make sure that we fill in the whole year so that there seems very activated and everybody's really aware of it all throughout the entire year. As far as the signature event, we are looking at May 3 of 2025. We're going to throw a 100-year block party. It's going to be a free community event. The base of it may look very similar to the wonderful event that we do on the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club for the 4th of July, but we're going to take it to the next level. So Cory and I actually had some meetings this morning, and we're continuing to work on what kind of spectacular signature event would not only be great for our community, but would draw people to our community to help celebrate with us. Again, it'd be free for everyone and be very, very inclusive, which was also some of the missions that we were given in the beginning. The next thing we want to focus on is to create five unique art installations. We have located three that we definitely want to work with, which is the Lightfoot Wall, the Rec Center Wall, and one of the City Hall sides of this building. We'd like to find two more locations, and we'll do a formal presentation of what exactly we're doing and how this exactly will look. But our overall idea is to make these photo destinations. People from outside our community would want to come here to find them, and people within our community, all of them would want to have a great picture there. So you'll see, one of the things that we're suggesting is, you know, bats are kind of our thing here, but to do these amazing bat wings, you know, maybe they're 20 feet wide by 10 feet tall. Only place you can get something super creative and artistic, and you have to have your picture made with it. So it becomes a destination which helps draw and market our area even more. So we really want to work on the RFPs, get some local artists involved, and kind of move forward with those installations. They might be more than murals. They might be a sculpture. They might be a giant, you know, photo opportunity of some other kind. So those are things that we're looking into. Again, we think it would be a great collaboration with the Pedestrian Advisory Committee where we link these together in some sort of you can walk to all of these, or you can ride your bike to all of these. So we're going to work together with them to help make, however, that mat might come together to make that something fun for the community as well. And lastly, we have Sundays in the Park, which we're going to feature one of the parks each quarter, work with the clubs to over-activate that park, and again, really focus on the walkability and bikeability that Temple Terrace has, and just make it come to life, and it'll just be another part of the celebration, and we'll work very closely with the Parks and Rec Department on that. So the next steps for us are to finalize these plans and get the budgets together. We appreciate the money that's been allocated to us in the budget, and we'll look to be spending that very soon to start activating some of the merchandise that we want to make and securing those artists for the art installations. Again, we'll come back with more formal presentations when we need approvals on exactly what we're doing and where they're going, but we just wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update. We're also going to start over-communicating to the clubs, make sure that they have the logo, that they are really aware of what we're doing. We're going to use the same presentation to share with them so that they can all really buy into it and help support us in every way, so that, again, it becomes an overall community event. And then we'd love to come back to the council again in April with some more approvals and updates for where we are headed next. So. Did there any questions about our work or any of the things that we've been doing?
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. Council members?
Great job. Thank you.
Just one question. With regard to the schools within the city limits, what, do you have any plans to try to bring them into and incorporate them into the celebration?
Absolutely. We did have some workshops, and I think all of the schools came at some point during the workshops. So when I say clubs and committees, I should have probably said schools as well, because we absolutely, they all were very interested in what we were doing, and we'll share this presentation with them and see how we can activate and definitely include them in everything that we do.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank to the members of the committee who are here. Thank you so much for your work. Next up, we have, yes. Next up, we have a presentation from the Temple Terrace Arts Council, and we have First Vice President Sharon Gaskins here to present. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I'm here to invite you all, and all of you as well, to the 50th Annual Arts and Crafts Festival. This year, it is our 50th, so we are celebrating in a big way. We hope you'll all get a shirt.
One single bombing while they're evacuating from South Florida. We have media requests for them to speak, but they're afraid of retaliation, not only here, but back home as well. We have multiple families here, constituents of yours, that live, that are American, and a mother, actually, a mother who has five children right now stuck in Gaza. There's no way out. I guess what I'm trying to say is, as we were children, we were taught that the most basic things in life are clear. There is good and bad, and there is night and day. There's no debate over that. We, as a nation right now, as the Muslims in this nation, are conflicted. Do we consider every life valuable and sacred? Or are some lives more valuable than others? Because when we're looking around, there are efforts being made at a federal level, state level, and even local, but there's no mention of the loss of Muslim life, of Christian life. Earlier today, a few hours ago, an angelic church was bombed, an angelic hospital was bombed in Gaza. Right now, the death toll is more than 500, which is housing people that were already injured in detrimental, in critical condition, and they lost further, losing many more innocent lives. What I want to bring to your attention is unequivocal support of anything, just like night and day, unequivocal support of anything is harmful for us. We're seeing local municipal and other officials making statements that are not only endangering, but also costing the lives of Muslims, of Arab Americans. So CARE Florida has started a campaign that is "Every American Safe." As Americans, we should not distinguish or give one life more value than another. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mom. Next, uh, next form I have is from Shahab Ahmed. Good evening, sir. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Is every life sacred? This is the question that thousands of Muslims in this city and across the nation are struggling to answer right now. The Declaration of Independence states that all men are created equal, yet this founding belief seems to be far from what we're witnessing right now. Just today, as Imam Abdullah mentioned, a hospital was bombed, killing over 500 individuals, including children. We are seeing children deprived of basic essentials, food, water, electricity. Forget about education, forget about social lives. We're seeing children lose their fathers, mothers, brothers, and sisters for no reason besides where they were born. Innocent civilians are being sprayed with chemical weapons. This isn't a religious issue, this is a human rights issue. And right now, we're seeing universities, institutions, and elected officials blindly supporting this genocide that is happening. This affects children not only in other parts of the world, but also right here at home. This very week, a mother and her six-year-old son were both stabbed repeatedly in Chicago by her landlord, who said, quote, "You Muslims must die." I want to repeat that. A mother, a citizen of the United States of America, lost her six-year-old son by stabbing for no reason, for no crime besides the fact that they were Palestinian. His name was Wadiya. I want to ask, what can a six-year-old do that deserves being stabbed 26 times? The statements that these institutions and organizations are publishing harms our communities right in front of us. Our sons and daughters are being bullied, harassed, and even attacked right here in the city of Temple Terrace. And this is all because of the asymmetrical messaging that our elected officials are sponsoring, are supporting. And so I urge you to speak up, to protect the lives of our children in your constituency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. Uh, next up is Rod Kawaja.
Yes, I, can I give my palm to Dr. Samir?
Um, let me figure this out. Um, Doctor, you don't have a request in speak, so you're just swapping one for another?
Yes.
Okay. No, 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 he's just swapping one for another, so it's... Yep, yes, you may. Dr. Tamimi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Samir Tamimi, and I'm the Director of MDF, that is Muslim for Democracy and Fairness. As, we all have been following the events and the war in the Middle East. We all saddened with the loss of the human lives, human rights, and the human reasoning over there and sometimes over here. Both sides happen to have relatives, as you heard, in our community, in our country, the United States of America. Understandably, those relatives and supporters are being affected and are emotionally involved. But unfortunately, sometimes the emotion goes out of control and harm our own people in our local communities. We are calling for restraints on all sides. The issue is too complex to be handled in, at the individual level. Both the Jewish community and the Muslim community have reached out to our local authorities to provide some protection, for example, comfort zones. And we are lucky enough to find the kind, to find the kind-hearted, understanding, and able authorities. Thank to God, and thank to the mayor, police chief, the police department managers, and other elected officials, for the good responses and services there are being provided continuously until hopefully the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Amanda, oh my goodness, I might need a little help here. Amanda...
I'll shake Ally.
Okay, I'll let you shake. Good evening, ma'am, welcome.
Good evening.
Beautiful children.
Thank you so much. So, um, I come here to echo what everybody else has said. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is that the little six-year-old boy who got stabbed, it wasn't just once, it was 26 times. As a mother, because I'm definitely not a public speaker, I'm not a person who is, um, a leader, especially in this community, as I just moved here in February, but as a mother, it kills me inside to, to hear that a little boy got stabbed 26 times. And not only that, the hospital that was bombed today, that wasn't even including the 1,030 babies and children that have been murdered in Gaza. They're not Hamas. The hospital is not, it's, it's a, it's a war crime. Cutting the food, water, electricity from a population is a war crime. They, Israel told the people of northern Gaza to evacuate to the southern, and on the safe route, they bombed them, they bombed the ambulances, they even bombed firefighters the other day. It's, it's atrocious. It's not even about religion or finding a solution for that area right now. It's purely about stopping U.S. aid to Israel, so they stop bombing these people and so that they allow humanitarian aid in. There was one crossing near Egypt, and they have not let humanitarian in, although they said that they would. They have been bombing that, I think the last time I heard, they bombed it four times. There's no way that we can go over there and help these people, even with the aid, because it's not getting to them. And it's just, it's terrible. And so we're calling for the U.S. to stop giving aid to Israel, request a ceasefire, and care about both sides. I know President Biden, he's gonna go over there, and he's gonna meet with the Arab leaders, but even the Arab leaders in that area are not doing anything right now. We can't imagine how it would be for our children to die whenever there's a, a school shooting. So, them, like, living in, in a terror for a week straight, and, and their electricity is cut off, so we're barely getting snippets in, but just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And the last request I currently have is from Rania? Am I saying that right?
Rania.
Rania, I'm sorry, Rania Abdul. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, and I would like to start with, Assalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Wabarakatuh. This is the Muslim greeting, which starts of peace, and peace is super essential, part of our religion and our existence as Muslims. And, uh, plus, I'm also Arab, and I'm also Palestinian, and I'm also American, and that's why I carry this flag, because I believe in the moral compass that, um, is, it already aligns with the Muslim community as people who care about, uh, being righteous, being just, being fair, and that's what I'm here for. I'm here as a mother and as, um, a voice of all the mothers in Gaza, because it hurts me to see my sisters and our kids in Palestine being tortured as civilians. It's a big responsibility on me, and I feel guilty living in peace over here without demanding peace for, for those civilians over there. They are not left alone whatsoever. I care about both civilians, don't get me wrong. I care about every civilian in the world, and I would like our government, um, to care about the people over there, and especially the Palestinians, because they have nobody representing them. And that's what I expect from my government here. And the reason I'm here in Temple Terrace, even though I don't live in the city, but it's most of the population of Arab Americans live in, in Temple Terrace, and it's, if I don't visit every day, I'm, I'm here every day doing everything that I can to contribute to our economy or be part of the community. So I would like to ask everybody to do whatever they can to stop and cease the genocide that is happening over there, and, and to just put yourself in their shoes and understand that, even though I hear so many people think that they elected Hamas and that's a consequence, killing kids and mothers and civilians is never a consequence. And I know that that's a morality that the United States holds, and that was one of the reasons that the United States went to stop, uh, all the cruel, atrocious behavior of many leaders throughout the world. And that's why I'm here. So thank you, and I wish that you can at least put yourself in their shoes and understand that they don't have an authority that leads them, and if I'm being bombarded every day with bombs and my rights are being taken, and I don't have hopes and dreams, and my kids are being killed, and my brothers and sisters and neighbors every day, anybody who's gonna come and tell me, please, I'm gonna defend you, I will be saying, go for it. So that's where they're at right now. So please, let's stop that atrocious behavior, and let's stand by them and give them a voice and let them know that we're here and standing by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay, if not, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the council, or of the meeting, rather. I do want to say to our, um, residents who are here in attendance tonight, thank you for being here. All of our residents of the city and their supporters, I know you don't live in the city, but that's okay. The entire community is always welcome to come to our council meetings and take three minutes, and we will sit here all night if we have to, to listen to one at a time, three minutes. So, um, you're welcome. I want to thank you also for the dialogue that we have had, uh, this week with, with the leadership of the community, um, and please, I would encourage you, please keep that dialogue going. We certainly will. It's, this is our city, and geographically, we're fairly small and fairly congested and very diverse. We have not only Muslims and Arabs, but we have a Jewish community, we have a Christian community, we have gay and lesbians that live here, we have, you name it. I mean, there's, I couldn't even begin to list the number of people, and that's really a strength that we have in our city, but it also causes friction points at times. And so this is a difficult time for many people in our city. Our primary role here as city leaders is to provide that access and protection for all of our residents, not just one or one group or one another group. So, thank you for coming here, you're welcome. We're happy to, to hear from you, both at the meetings and, and in between the meetings, keep up the dialogue. If there is something going on, as you have been doing, please share it with us, give us a chance to work through this with you, so that we can keep this from escalating in our city. Because at the end of the day, we all are neighbors, and we all shop at the same stores, we all eat at the same restaurants, we know each other, and we don't need this tearing the fabric of our city apart. So, thank you. I know that you may feel uncomfortable getting up and leaving, but I also know how boring the rest of our meeting's going to be, so if you want to stay, you're certainly welcome, but I want you to know you're welcome to leave if you want also, so it's not, not considered. Okay, so, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Some of them. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is adopted. Next is the public, first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects Update. I will open the public hearing, and we have Sean College, welcome. Sean, it's good to see you. He is here from the Planning Commission to explain.
Thank you, yes, I'm Sean College with the Hillsborough County Planning Commission, where I am the Director of Strategic Planning, Environmental, and Research. This is something we do each year, somewhat of a housekeeping item. The state law requires that each year you update your comprehensive plan with the schedule of projects, which the schedule of projects is, it is the part of your capital improvement program that addresses your levels of service as adopted in your comprehensive plan. So it's a subset of your capital improvement program. And every year, we, um, we do, we do update the comprehensive plan with that list of projects from your CIP. Per state law, it's done by ordinance, and we delete the old, uh, schedule, and we add the new schedules, so that is what this item is. It has gone through the Planning Commission and is recommended for your approval.
Thank you, Sean. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Council members' questions for Mr. College. Very good. Uh, I will then close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to the capital improvement section of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule, projects for fiscal year 2023 through 2024, through fiscal year 2027 through 2028, and incorporating the 10-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for 2024 through 2033 into the schedule of projects which incorporates by reference per the Comprehensive Plan cap policy 1.5.13, Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization's Transportation Improvement Program, Hillsborough Area Regional Transit's, Transit Development Plan, and Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date in appealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance to adopt the 2023 to 2027 Capital Improvement Section upon first reading.
Second. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a nay sign, uh, and the ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for the second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, November the 7th, 2023. Thank you for coming, Mr. College. Carryover council business. Any carryover council business? Seeing none. New business in board reports. Councilmember Abel.
I have one from the Bicycle and Pedestrian and Safety Advisory Committee. The committee became aware that the city has possession of some, um, bicycle racks that were donated to us by, by Cutter a while back, and, um, they wanted to have those placed. So they wanted me to bring that to you all. I spoke to Carlos about it, and the report we got back from staff was that the particular type of bike racks that we have are, um, pretty expensive to install. They, they involve a certain amount of concrete and, and attachments that are pretty pricey. So I discussed with Carlos the, uh, the possibility of, uh, maybe installing another type of bike rack in area parks. The, the committee put together a really nice report and, um, kind of studied which parks would really probably benefit from them the most, and, um, they, they selected some. I don't have them off the top of my head right now, but I wanted to, um, maybe turn it over to Carlos for a little more detail and then discuss with you all about whether you would like to move forward with installing these bicycle racks.
Thank you, council member. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, so the, unfortunately, I don't have the list of the parks myself, I apologize for that, but we, there was money placed in the FY24 budget, about $35,000 for bicycle projects for the year. The cost here, looking at the, the cheaper alternative, if we were to do five racks, what, what councilmember Abel is talking about is, we would essentially buy newer racks that wouldn't be as robust, but they wouldn't need this massive concrete foundation, so it actually would be cheaper for us to do that. Uh, and then we'd keep the existing five, we could use them, for example, in our C area as one option when we do our pedestrian master plan, so we could do things with those, those would not go to waste. So we'd be looking at, uh, probably a cost of not to exceed about $3,500 tops, I would imagine at this point, for, for this acquisition. Again, the money is there, the budget's, it's adopted. Uh, really, this evening, we'd just make sure that you're okay with this idea of putting these bike racks throughout these city parks, and we can get you the list of those parks, unfortunately, just, and I don't know, actually, if you, give me a second, I don't know if Mr. Langfeld remembers the parks on...
I can get the list off the top of my head.
Yeah, but we can get that to you.
I will say that the, the committee was really specific about the type of bike racks that they felt were, um, of good enough quality to actually use, and, um, I would want to make sure we consulted about which ones we ended up selecting, but, um, I can see if I can pull up the racks, the, the locations, if you want to hear those now, or not really that relevant.
Okay. Councilmember, any questions?
No.
Nope.
No.
So, do we need a formal motion or just a thumbs up, I think is what we need here, right?
Yeah, that, that give us enough direction, just...
Okay, thumbs up.
Great. One more thing.
Yes.
So, the committee was also looking to make a presentation for an update for you all. We're looking at the first meeting in December, and hopefully we'll be ready by then to let you know what's going on with the possible bike path and throughout, and maybe some crossings over some main, main roads in the city.
That, that would really be beneficial. I would like to see that, if that's...
Yes.
Could we have some other projects that this touches? Um, including one that we just passed here a minute ago with the capital improvement. There's some projects on there that aren't funded yet that may be eligible for funding, depending on what we're doing here.
Right.
So there's, there's a lot of interlocking pieces here, the, the construction of the stadium, those kinds of things, so that would be very good if we could get something, yeah. Good? Okay, anything else?
That's all.
Other new business?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez.
So, the Riverwatch Task Force is, uh, they have a formal volunteer application, and they're working on connecting with community groups and volunteers to get the process going for, uh, a day or maybe several days of cleaning up the Brazilian peppers on, at least right now, the city-owned property, and, uh, it's live, so I don't, where, where could somebody get the application? Sorry, I'm asking our, Mr. Tinch.
There you go. Call car.
You can get a bit of the parks and rec or the leisure services department, sorry. Moral has them, how about that?
That other guy.
He went that a way.
Okay, so, it, so the, the, the program is essentially live, and they're reaching out to various volunteer groups, such as Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful and, and different groups that do cleanups around the area, and they're going to request, if anybody's interested to volunteer, so if there's anybody in the city who's interested in volunteering on this project, so it'd be removing the Brazilian pepper plant, which is invasive and grows apparently really quickly, um, to go to the Family Rec Center complex, it's probably the best place to start, and there is a volunteer form there that you can get and get involved in this. And also, they are currently working on revising their focus, as Dave Pogorlich said earlier in his, when he was talking about, um, applying for the Riverwatch Task Force, that in the years past, the focus was trying to be recognized as a part of the river and not a reservoir, and understanding from Hillsborough County and City of Tampa that the part that flows through Temple Terrace of the Hillsborough River needs to be addressed as a comprehensive part of a river system, not just a reservoir, and I think we made great progress in years past, and now I think the Riverwatch Task Force is looking to expand their mission a little, so they're working on that right now, and when they have that, where they're comfortable with what they are, what their focus is going to be, they're gonna bring that to city council for city council approval. So that's it.
Thank you. Other new business. I have something I need a thumbs up on also. Council will recall at our goal-setting session in the spring, we talked about, um, trying to enhance our public art program here in the city. Also, the renovations that we recently completed on the first floor here, you'll notice that , uh, city manager kind of did them color-neutral, and the thinking behind that, which I thought was a pretty smart idea, was that the art would provide the color, would be, that would make the art pop. So, we, fast forward the budget process, we did put some seed money in the FY24 budget for, uh, public art. It's fairly open, it can be intersection murals, it can be, um, we don't have tons of money, so it can't be all of this, but I mean, it could be sculptures, it could be wall art for the, we hope to get some art on display on the first floor. It would serve two purposes, it would be, beautify our building, and it would also give an artist an opportunity to display their work, and the art, art piece would be for sale, they could scan a QR code and get connected to the artist and purchase the art that's on display here. So, um, as you know, we have about, at last count, I think it's like 14,000 projects in the hopper right now for our staff, so I, most of this work would have to, in some form or fashion, be coordinated with the Arts Council anyway, and would involve our Vice Mayor Chambers anyway. And so I've, I've asked, um, the Vice Mayor if he's willing to kind of, on behalf of the council, be the public art guru or contact, or somebody to kind of champion this project, work with the local artists, work with the Arts Council, try to identify art that's suitable for these things, and maybe some places for public art at our, I don't know, Lightfoot or Library of the Rex, those kinds of things, um, and kind of come back to the council with, hey, this is what we'd like to do. So, I, I just would like a thumbs up, or if anybody wants to say, oh heck no, we're not gonna let James do that, um, but to, to use the Vice Mayor as kind of the contact for that purpose.
Color art? Oh.
It might not be the right one, we'll have a bunch of brown out here.
I do have one question. Will this dovetail with the five locations that the, um, Centennial Commission's looking at?
Well, I was wondering that when they were talking.
Yeah.
Um, I, like, the ground floor here, probably not, but, but in the larger scheme, yes.
In the overall scheme of things.
Yeah.
Most definitely, yes.
Yeah.
Take best with you.
So are we kind of good with that, probably, he's got to, obviously, we'll come back to council anyway, but, okay.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Good, and I wasn't going to make a comment about every color's neutral to me. Thank you.
A lot of grays and browns, and maybe a green down there, but you won't know it.
No, it's all, thank you, Mayor. It all ties in very well.
Yes, okay. Any other new business? If not, we'll move on to the City Managers' report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite Leader Services Director Langfield to come up to talk to us about the upcoming Fall Festival.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me. Coming up next Saturday night, October 28th, at the Family Recreation Complex soccer field, the Parks and Recreation Division will be putting on its annual Fall Festival. This is one of our city's signature events. It is always hugely popular with children and adults alike. This year's event will be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The cost is $5 per child. Adults accompanying children will get in for free. To avoid the lines, we're encouraging people to pre-buy their tickets at the Family Recreation Complex. That way, when you get there, you can skip the lines and head right in. As in years past, the event will include trunk-or-treating, our haunted maze, dancing, carnival games, costume contests for infants through adults with family categories. We do have a new addition this year. I think we're going to have the creepiest, crawliest petting zoo ever, brought to us by Petronas Petting Zoo. They're going to bring snakes, lizards, tarantulas, scorpions, pet rats, worms, roaches, and even bunnies to our Fall Festival, all being able to be handled by the participants under qualified supervision, of course. So we encourage everybody to come out, have a picture taken with a tarantula on your arm or a scorpion in your hand. Not me, though. But encourage everybody in the community to come out. It is a great event and a great time, and we hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield.
No, go ahead. I have just a comment when you're finished.
Next, I'd like to invite up our outgoing Public Works Director Ray LeBlanc. That's you. Yeah. So.
I've seen this in a movie one time.
So Ray asked that we not throw him a party, which was tough for all of us because we, I think everybody universally loves Ray. Actually, isn't that a show, Everybody Loves Ray or something? And Ray has worked for the city for 20 years. He is a, I would say, a fixture, a character, a bunch of terms that we might not be able to use in mixed company, but he's, when I first interviewed for this position, we were going making the rounds with the other candidates, all the department directors were professional, outstanding, and then I met Ray. And Ray was just like your, you know, your uncle, that uncle that everybody has, and he was just speaking the truth, completely unvarnished, and I, he made an impact. I definitely remembered Ray going back home. So, and he has been an incredible department director in my estimation. Whenever I needed anything to be done, he was right on top of it. The changes that the mayor, you mentioned earlier here, the changes that were done on the first floor, I mean, those are largely attributable to this man's direction right here. He was on top of everything, and he, and everything was done well. And if it doesn't, if it wasn't done well, he was there at 5:00 in the morning to fix it the next day. So I'm going to miss him, and I think the entire team is going to miss him. So I'd just like to, with your approval, I'd like to have this, give him a couple of moments here to say anything he wants to say before he goes away on his journey, if he wants to. Well, not anything, not anything. Remember, this is a family show. So, go ahead.
Well, you know, like a, this is hard for me. You know, like a good workout, my father told me when I was a kid, if it don't hurt, it's probably not worth it. What you did wasn't worth it. It hurts. However, I was fortunate enough the last couple of years to find out that partners are not just for dancing. So I'm gonna, I'm going to blame a lot of this on my new wife. And I've told the manager, this is probably the best year I've had here. And I could, maybe 2004 with the four hurricanes might have been the best year for me. We had two football teams over there, and when it was over, they wanted more. And it goes back to, to me, for the, it's the service culture that the city cultivates. Because if you don't do good, you're about it. And if you don't do good, a couple of times, we're going to find somebody that's going to do good. When I came here, I told the director, Woody Garcia, some of you may remember him. Well, James remembers everybody. I said, I'm here for the morals, not the money. And I'm very grateful. I leave with, I leave with some irreplaceable memories. And I learned when I was this big that, you know, at the end of the day, that's what you got. I'm, I'm, I'm going to run out of time before I run out of money, and that's the way I planned it. I can't thank everybody enough. I, I really can't, and, let me try to get this out. I'm sorry. I had a, I had a life-saving moment about two years ago where somebody that I was with was choking. Bad. And it was, it was close. And way away from help, the only way we got out of that was for instantaneous seconds, I flashed back to this man over here, Mr. Kemp, his staff in the Public Works breakroom, showing us how to save somebody. Had I not been here and worked for the city, and you're talking about milliseconds of somebody on the floor choking, and then for that 16th, 1,000th of a second, I saw Joe Cable and Scott Murley, whoever, in the Public Works breakroom, and I stopped that person from choking, and it's directly, indirectly related to that guy right there. And now she's my wife. Let's, I just want to thank everybody. It's hard. It's hard, but I'll, I'll take some priceless things with me. I appreciate it.
Ray, we, personally, you've been a great asset, well, really to the whole city, but to me personally, you have too, because there's a few of you I can always count on to give me your unfettered opinion on whatever.
Learning, I'm learning.
Solicited or not, sometimes. And there's others here, there's a couple of you that don't have any filter. And truthfully, I appreciate that in a person. I like to hear the unfiltered version, even when it's something that you may not want to hear. I think that makes us each do a better job. And so I appreciate that, I appreciate your, you know, you have to have a certain confidence in the other person if you're willing to do that. And so I appreciate that you've always given me that unfiltered version, tell me what's good, what's not good. It's very helpful. We have a terrific City Manager now, everything's kind of smoothed out, but as you know, we went through a lot of turbulence there for a while, and you were one of the ones that, well, others too. But your honesty and your work and leaning into things, and it really helped us get through some of that, so.
Yeah, I, I get the behind-the-scenes stuff, and I, I'm a time-management person, it's relative to time. My plan was 24, 30 months, but, you know, it's, that's the choice that hurts. But I know in the long run that, you know, I, I, it's, it's one or the other. I can't do both, so.
Well, six months at home with this new wife, she may send you back anyway.
I've got a little landscaping, I got, you know, I got.
Counsel?
You will be missed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, I'm very grateful. And anybody that's listening or looking for a place to go, or wants to, you know, find a home or not, there's the guy right there. Thanks for landing the plane.
City Manager?
Thank you. Now, as we're talking about the transition, actually, I would like to invite up our new incoming Public Works Director, Jason Warrenfels. Jason comes to us indirectly from Pennsylvania, worked for several years for Wilson College, if I remember that correctly, up in Pennsylvania, and most recently in Dade City. He started a couple of weeks ago, sort of transitioning, so that we try to make this as simple as possible. And his official first day as the sole source director will be on Monday. So Jason, if you want to say a few words?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. To, yeah, I'm grateful to be here. I am super grateful to have Ray for the last couple of weeks. He's showed me the ropes as fast as he could. Loves the city. Ray loves being here. I have some very big shoes to fill. But, you know, as I learned a variable, very valuable lesson this afternoon, as, I do not live in Temple Terrace, unfortunately, I found out about traffic this afternoon. That was, that was a good lesson to learn. I confirmed with Ray today, the meeting start time, all right, I'm good. I have an appointment at 4:30, which, yeah, that didn't happen. So it's a good, good lesson to be learned today. So, no, Ray's done a good job. I feel, I feel comfortable. You know, he's, he tells me he's turned his phone off, but I'm going to keep working on that until we get to the week's end. But, yeah, I'm glad to be here. I'm super excited and see a lot of good things going forward, and I'm just glad to be a part of it.
Well, welcome aboard, and we're very happy to have you. And you do have big shoes to fill, but, you know, every new person that comes in brings fresh eyes too, and new ideas, and that's how organizations grow. And so we're welcome, your viewpoint too. So, so we're very excited to have you here.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Counsel?
Welcome.
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 That's all you have? That's it? City Attorney?
From my department, no news is good news. I have nothing.
No news is good news is right. Okay. Councilmembers, anything else to come before the council? Directors, anything? Public, anything? Okay, very good. We will be adjourned. Oh, wait.
Can I just make a quick announcement about something that's going to be? With all the discussion earlier, it really wasn't appropriate, but we're having a prescription drug take-back on the last Saturday of October, the 28th, from 10:00 to 2:00, and there's eight locations across the county. And this is where you just clean out your medicine cabinets, and the point is to keep the environment clean and to keep drugs out of the wrong hands. But I'm very happy to say we're going to have one right here in Temple Terrace at the Police Department. So between 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM, empty out your medicine cabinets, and it'll all be disposed of very efficiently and safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelling. Okay, we will be adjourned.